Welcome to the Clovis City Council Debate. Brought to you by Talk Radio 1550 KXEX, The Clovis Roundup, The Clovis Veterans Memorial District, and The Clovis Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, you'll hear from the candidates, incumbents Lynn Ashbeck and Von Moana Tua, candidates Diane Pierce, Noah Albus, and Herman Nagra, moderated by Greg Newman, CEO of The Clovis Chamber of Commerce, and by Rich Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Billy Zhang with The Clovis Roundup Newspaper. And we cover all those news that happens in our local community, especially here in Clovis. And tonight, I believe, is a very important night for all of us here in Clovis. And we will be discussing a lot of things that's going on. And so I'm really excited.
On behalf of Talk Radio 1550 KXEX, all politics is local. So we're happy you're here, and we hope you enjoy tonight's debate.
Hi, I'm Lorenzo Rios with The Clovis Veterans Memorial District, where the mission of the district is to serve as a permanent living memorial honoring US military and veterans, provide facilities and support programs just like this one, to promote a legacy of service for preserving our communities and countries foundational ideals. Every citizen adds to the strength of a nation. Our service members defend this nation. It's our duty to be responsible citizens, informed and engaged. So it's appropriate that we'd host this event where you get to learn about what our potential leaders here, the ones that you're going to vote on March 2nd, feel, and do they represent your views? So I look forward to this lively conversation. I look forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you. It is now my honor to introduce our moderators for this evening. Greg Newman, President and CEO of The Clovis Chamber of Commerce, a resident of Clovis since 1990. Before joining The Clovis Chamber of Commerce as their CEO in 2018, Greg spent over 30 years in local commercial real estate and shopping center management, serving as general manager for both the Fig Garden Village and Sierra Vista Mall, no stranger to business. Rich Rodriguez, our second moderator, is a 44-year veteran broadcast journalist at KMPH Fox 26. He anchors the Sunday Night News and reports from the field four nights a week. Rich is married and has six beautiful adult children, an engaged community leader who will lead us in this conversation.
Thanks, Lorenzo, and welcome to our viewers and our listeners. Quick recap of the rules. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. If a candidate mentions another candidate during their minute to respond, the mentioned candidate will have 30 seconds for rebuttal. Now, after the minute is ended, the candidate's microphone will be muted. The order of the candidate's seating was done by selecting numbers 1 through 5 by the candidates earlier tonight. We're going to begin with the opening statements. Lynn Ashbeck, you are first.
Thanks, Rich. Clovis is the best place to live in the valley. We did not get here by accident. We got here because of strong, consistent, steady leaders who work together to keep Clovis the safest city, who solve problems and focus on what holds us together rather than trafficking in fear or partisan politics. Leaders who understand our history, have a vision for our future, and who are proven, trusted, fiercely protective of our community, and have more to offer the voters than talking points or social media chatter. I am that leader. I am proud of my record of service and outcomes for the residents of Clovis in the areas that matter to so many of us. Public safety, partnerships with Clovis Unified, support for our business community, expanding our parks and trails, and ensuring local government works for residents. I am a health professional who recognizes that we must continue the work to slow the spread of COVID-19, and that a healthy community is required for a healthy economy. And I look forward to tonight's conversation.
Thank you. Herman Nagra, you are next.
I would like to start by thanking our birth responders. Not only our police and firefighters, but also our essential workers who are sometimes forgotten, our grocery store workers, our gas station workers, and our delivery drivers. Thank you for your sacrifice. You have given up your own safety and risked your own health by giving to our city and our country. Thank you. I would also like to share with you that I am the only business owner in this race. By business owner, I mean a separate mortgage, a separate payroll and utilities, a separate building, like a restaurant or a cafe. As a business owner of a business that is 24 hours, I am on call. I raise my hand first if somebody does not show up. That is how I will work for our city. On call, and when somebody doesn't show up, my hand will be raised first.
Thank you. Noah Albus, you are next.
Thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Noah, and I was born in Alexandria, Egypt, and I've had the privilege of living and traveling across the world. After completing my bachelor's degree from Columbia University, I entered the world of education where I have been ever since. I moved to Phoenix, Arizona, to teach 6th grade as part of the Teach for America program, a nonprofit organization committed to helping all students achieve an excellent education throughout the country. Ever since I completed my time teaching, I then moved on to the operations side of education where I have helped hundreds of students achieve their educational goals, be it goals like in the trades fields where they have gone on to work in our healthcare industry, in health, in HVAC, and air conditioning, across the spectrum. I have been able to support students here in the Clovis area find jobs. I am running because I want to bring responsible leadership, responsible growth, and responsible support for our local business leaders.
Next opening statement, Diane Pierce.
Good evening. I want to thank our sponsors, moderators, and all of you for tuning in tonight. The Clovis way of life is not just a catchphrase. It stands for a sense of community that was built on local control. But there are some on this stage who are willing to just give it away and leave us to a Sacramento-run, one-size-fits-all approach. We need leaders who will stand strong for our local control and not abdicate the responsibility by suggesting it is time to relinquish it to the state. I also believe diversity of experience on a governing body is important, and this past year has exposed a limitation in our current leadership. None of our council members are self-employed or missed a paycheck this past year. We have witnessed the impact decisions have on our business community, and I think we should have a voice on the council. And with our city budget facing serious challenges ahead, I can be trusted to keep first things first with starch with a laser-like focus on funding our top-notch public safety. I appreciate your consideration.
And our final opening statement from Von Manatua.
Today's my mom's 82nd birthday, and here I am. 10 children, 40 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren. All this is not that important. So if you have a mom, love her. If you have a child, hug him. And just want to say, Mom, happy birthday. And I hope you're proud of the boy you raised. I want to thank the veterans because of all the flags behind us. You give us freedom. Thank you for your service. I want to thank police and fire. I want to thank the healthcare workers who risk their lives every day. I also want to thank what a great country we have, that we can be here. And I'm not ashamed to say thank you to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And in the last 10 seconds, I want to say to the Indian farmers that we stand with you, we hear you, and I want to say that we also hear you, and we stand with you. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's get right to it. Let's start with, I'll read the first question. I'll read the question once. When it's your turn, if you would like me to repeat the question, just ask me so. Lynn, what is, there's the question. What is the number-one policy issue you are concerned about for Clovis, and how do you propose to address it?
Policy issues that come to mind, I think the most immediate that we have now is, it's hard to choose, Greg. I think I would choose the idea of sustainability for our public safety. Our community is the safest city in the valley, and we, as a council, are going to be faced with choices on how to sustain that going forward. So I think as we wrestle with the kind of community we want to continue in the future, the ability to sustain this community and the policies surrounding that really will be at the top of our list.
Okay, thank you. Herman, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, I believe that the development of our city is at issue. There is a great conflict of interest when many of the donations by candidates are received from big builders. So I do believe that there is a major issue in the growth of our city and how that is developing.
Okay, thank you very much. Noah, would you like to answer the question, please?
Yes, absolutely. So for me, the number-one issue is focusing on responsible growth for the city. We have had a lot of different developments that are going up across the city. And while that is great, we also have to ensure that we have responsible growth by ways of having educational facilities, recreational facilities, all the various things that make up a vibrant community. If we just continue to grow without making sure that the infrastructure is really there to support the community, our schools will continue to be overcrowded, and a lot of the things that make Clovis an attractive place for people to come to, wonderful schools, wonderful safety, a lot of these things will really be jeopardized. So it's incredibly important that as we grow, we're thoughtful and responsible about how we do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Diane?
I think the number-one policy issue is absolutely public safety. It has to be the number-one priority because if we aren't safe, nothing else really matters. And we are recognized currently, Clovis is one of the safest cities, and that's fantastic. But it's not a status that will magically maintain itself. We do have rising crime, and we do have an increasing problem with homelessness that we're going to need to address before it gets worse. And I think we need to do that specifically when it comes to the budget. We have to guarantee, our city council's number-one job should be to make sure that our public safety departments have all the resources they need to deliver their services at the level that our residents expect and deserve. And we have seen coming out of this year, a decrease of $1 million in our police department's budget from last year to this year. And that's not going to be a way that we're going to be able to continue doing that at the level at which we do. We have a fantastic department, both police and fire. We need to make sure that they are funded completely and are our absolute number-one priority.
Thank you. Von?
Safety is sort of the fabric of the community. It's sort of the, you know, lifeline of this community. Anything anyone can talk about without safety, there's no purpose. There's no business if it's not safe. You don't go shop if it's not safe. You don't walk on the beautiful trails if it's not safe. You also don't go to the parks. You don't go play after school. So safety is our primary responsibility here on the council. And so as such, that's why I have always supported safety, and that's why I'm endorsed by our police and our fire. And that's important to have the staff members who daily protect you say, "That's the gentleman. That is the servant that we want to continue to be on the council because he will always support public safety." Thank you.
Candidates, thank you. We're going to go to question number two. The city manager's job is to present the city council with a budget that reflects the priorities of the city. As a future policymaker, do you consider the current budget to reflect your priorities for the city of Clovis? Herman?
No, I do not. Early on, I also raised that our city's budget for our police department was cut by $1 million and fire department by $800,000, while our culture and recreation budget was cut less than 5%, $300,000. During a year that, 2020, we had 75% of the year in a lockdown or restriction. I would have lowered that budget by 25% and saved our fire budget and police budget. We know that last year we had the worst wildfires. Those were budgets that didn't need to be cut. The highest homicide rate in Fresno County was in 2020. Those two budgets should never have been cut, but there are other areas that we didn't need during the lockdown or restriction that could have been cut.
Thank you, Herman. Noah?
Thank you. So when we look at our current budget, a very large portion of that budget does go to our police department, and I think that that is appropriate. We absolutely do need a safe community on which to build. So I wouldn't change that. But what I do feel is important is that we ensure that the other portions of what is necessary in our city are also being funded. We have to ensure a community is, some of the things that make a community safe are having activities for our children to pursue, are having wonderful educational facilities. These are things that help us prevent crime, that help us decrease the need for so much spending going towards the police department. So I don't advocate cutting back on what we're giving to our police department, but I do believe that the cuts that were made this year were a part of responsible decision-making that had to be made as part of the pandemic. Those were decisions that were needed to be made on a holistic perspective. Speaking to just a specific number coming out of the police department is really ignoring the fact that they are such a large overall.
Thank you. Time is up. Next, Diane.
I do think that the budget is generally reflective of what we need in the city of Clovis. I think the biggest difficulty in trying to assess how that is really fleshed out is in trying to understand what is funded by the general fund and what the other departments that are kind of self-sustaining do for themselves. So really, when we look at police and fire or public safety coming out of the general fund, there's only so much of that pie that you can divvy up. And so it's very difficult when you do need to put the priority on public safety, how you can do anything different than what is being proposed here. So I think the real key, when we look at our budget, is focusing on how to grow that general fund. And that is through the things that create the revenues for it, like property taxes, sales taxes, other taxes. And that's where we really saw the hit this past year as our businesses were closed and hotels and things like that weren't contributing. And so I think it's key that we focus mostly on making sure the revenues are healthy so that we can fund all of those departments in the general fund at an appropriate level.
Thank you. Von?
The question, does it align with my priorities? And that's important because that's not how government works. It's not what I think. It's what the community thinks. It's what, does it align with the community's priorities? And I would have to say, every year we look at that community survey, 90% of our residents say, "Give it to safety. Give it to safety." And I support that because I want safety. And so it is always aligned with what the community wants. And I must always stand with what the community has asked for. And that yearly survey dictates that. And we must be willing to adjust and be nimble to be able to provide that for the community. And yes, because of what, the amount of revenues we get, we are even more efficient with less. Our success sometimes makes it where our residents expect more. But because of the quality of the servants of the police and fire, we do give as much as they expect. Thank you.
Thank you, Von. Lynn?
Thank you. I want to agree with Von on that comment. The reason people live in Clovis are, there's only two. One is public safety, and one is public schools. So the fact that the bulk of our general fund budget is spent on public safety is right, and it is the effective way to spend the money. I want to clear up this. We hear over and over that we cut 100, or $1.1 million from police and $800,000 from fire. Simply not a fact. Because those funds are large, our city management team came to the council with their recommendations. And because the police recognizes that a whole community is a safe community, if we took every dime out of parks and the rec center and all the rest, there are prices to be paid for that. So I think it's really important to be honest about that. But our budget does reflect the priorities of our city, and I think we do a terrific job of investing in things like our seniors, our kids, our parks, our streets, that keep Clovis the best city in the valley.
Okay, thank you very much, Lynn. Our third question, how would you deal with Clovis's issue of meeting the state's requirement with affordable housing? Noah, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I think affordable housing is incredibly important. And this is something that we have to ensure that we are communicating appropriately to the community. Affordable housing is beneficial to the community as a whole. It brings in a diversity of people. It allows people who work in the community of Clovis to be able to afford to live here. So it really is dynamic for all of us. So it's very important that when we have land that is allocated to affordable housing, that that is exactly what it goes to. That if any land gets used for any other purpose, then we have to immediately allocate additional land to affordable housing and ensure the community as a whole understands that we all benefit from affordable housing.
Thank you. Diane?
I think one of the key things to understand when we talk about affordable housing is there's a difference between allocating the land or having it zoned for it, and then actually having the projects developed there. Because what the city has done is created this citywide overlay to say, "These are all the places that this affordable housing can be built." But they aren't responsible for building the projects. The free market really still has the part to play in a developer coming in and wanting to do that. And so we have seen a couple of projects that have come in with subsidized housing through the Fresno Housing Authority. And the key, I think, the citizens really need to understand is that the process that got us to this point started a long time ago. Where essentially, we overpromised the number of units that we would provide as the city of Clovis from what was asked of Fresno County. And so now we have this citywide overlay. And following that, there was still not enough being done, and the state came back and a compromise was made to also make it by right, which meant it removed council approval and community input. So this can go on anywhere across the city without community input.
Thank you. Thank you. Von?
When you get on the council, terms like affordable housing, all this kind of stuff, sounds kind of cool. You throw it out there. It seems like you care. You have to understand the issue first. You have to understand it. The demand or the, what is put upon us is to provide zoning. We don't build, so we cannot build. We have complied with the state's demands. We provided enough zoning. There was never a compromise. No such thing ever happened. The state mandated it. And so because of that, we, you know, did what the state mandated. An overlay is a tool that was allowed. And so affordable housing is something in which cities don't control because there are no funds for cities to build such type of housing. It has to be something in which there's funding before a city can actually build affordable housing or be in that market.
Thank you. Lynn?
Thanks. Affordable housing is a complex issue. I think what's important are the standards that we all expect in Clovis. Apply regardless of how much your house costs. So the stigma that comes with affordable housing, and you're not going to put that in my backyard, are you? Really is altered when we all want to live the Clovis way of life. So the city has done a really good job in the identifying zoning for affordable housing and working with our developers. It is a free-market exercise. And when we take land out of the affordable housing overlay, then we need to make sure it shows up again somewhere else. But we are on track to meet our obligations in affordable housing. It's the right thing to do. Our neighborhoods are richer when they're more diverse. But it's about the standards we have as a community that we share and not to divide us by saying, "Oh, well, that's the affordable housing over there, and I really want to live over here." That is not how Clovis got to be where we are today and won't sustain us into the future.
Thank you. Herman?
People should be able to live where they work. I want my employees to be able to live close to where they work. There should be a safety net in place for people who lose their job, have lowered hours, or are ill. So I am for affordable housing. However, if we have high-density housing that is irresponsibly planned, we will have a rising crime. Currently, in our southeast area of Clovis, our fire response time is in the red zone. We cannot build in areas until our response time from our public safety officers and fire department is not in the red zone.
All right, we're going to move on to question number four. The city of Fresno is now allowing recreational marijuana sales. Being that they are our neighboring city, do you feel it can impact public safety in Clovis? What is your position on marijuana sales and the recreational use of marijuana? Diane, you get the first chance at it.
I am not for the legalization of recreational marijuana. And when you look at Prop 64, the citizens of Clovis were not in favor of it either. And as Von has mentioned and others, as a council, they need to be reflective of the desires of the community. And so I think pursuing the policies that are limiting that here in the city of Clovis within our boundaries is absolutely appropriate. And I do think we obviously have to be considerate of the fact that what goes on in Fresno affects Clovis very much and vice versa. And so certainly, as we pursue those policies that reflect the values of our citizens and what their interests are, we have to keep all of that in mind. But again, as long as our first priority is public safety and we are providing that safe environment, we can handle all of those other things. And again, pursuing the interests of the community is what the council is there for.
Von?
Yeah, the important thing here is, once again, it's what the community has spoken, what has said. Because when the community spoke, it said they did not want any sales. They did not want any deliveries. And as such, we develop an ordinance to reflect that. And in the recent lawsuit, the court upheld that ability of local jurisdictions to have stricter guidelines, even if the state allows deliveries. And so there was a victory in the courts to say, "Clovis, you can have more because your residents want more." And we and I will continue to uphold that with regards to marijuana. Now, with regards to public safety, because our neighbors have more relaxed rules, the key is to work together. Because safety doesn't look at boundaries, you know? And so we have to work together so that way we are always ready, whether it's homelessness or crimes with marijuana, with any drugs. We'll work together with Fresno to keep crime down for all cities.
Lynn?
I think I agree with the comments from Von on that. We, the city of Clovis has listened to their residents, and they have not been supportive of retail sales or delivery. And we have ordinances to allow for personal growing, for medical use, for personal use. And I think that's appropriate, given the state of California laws. But the values of our city and the desires of our residents don't support delivery and/or retail sales. Like so many issues, it's not quite as simple as that dividing line between Willow, down Willow, between Fresno and Clovis. So we are certainly impacted by the city of Fresno in many things that they do. And so working together is really the answer. Our police department is very diligent about keeping an eye on this, and they have stayed ahead of that curve. And really, that's the secret of public safety, is to stay ahead of the curve when we can. And I think the city and the police department have done a really good job to this point.
Herman?
I don't support the retail sale of marijuana in Clovis. Right now, I walk through our parks, and the stench of marijuana is present daily. It hurts our community in parks where children play. Our home values will come down if there is marijuana used in our parks. Our parks are not smoking spaces. Additionally, marijuana use will start, and then we can have greater problems after that, such as needles. And I do not support that. I want our city to have safe areas for children to play in without having a stench of marijuana.
Thank you. Noah?
So marijuana use, recreational marijuana use, has, that is what we find here in the state of California. This is something that has been approved. So in my person, in my opinion, what we need to do is we have to ensure that we have responsible use and distribution of marijuana. We have the ability at this point where people can get these things delivered to their homes. And in my, you know, in my opinion, what we need to do is ensure that people have access to these things without trying to force them to be using marijuana out in a park. We have to ensure we're working with our police force in a responsible manner to ensure that in the same way that people are not supposed to be smoking in our public parks, they shouldn't be using marijuana either, and that it should be done in a responsible manner. And if that allows us to get tax revenue from it for our city, then I'm in support of that.
Thank you.
Okay, question five. During the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been inconsistency from one state to another in the level of restrictions placed on our citizens, schools, and businesses. Which state more closely represents the path you would have followed? Von, we'll start with you.
I would say Florida. Florida probably most aligns with us. If you saw the council meeting two weeks ago, we looked at the infection rate of all the cities in Fresno County, the infection rate of Fresno County, infection rate of the state. We were probably known as more mature about how we handled COVID. And you saw that the infection rate was still lower than Fresno County, every other city. And so it comes with, let's trust people knowing what to do. Allow the market also to dictate that because all our businesses complied with CDC guidelines. And lastly, we also have to take this very seriously, which we all did, and which the citizens and the businesses of Clovis did not just say, "Forget it and just go." They took everything very seriously, and that's reflects Florida.
Thank you. Lynn?
I think the fact that we have to ask which state we prefer suggests that there was never a plan beyond the state. And part of why we are in this circumstance is that every state could make up their own mind, and then every state decided they really couldn't make up their own minds, so then every county could make up their own mind. So I think the question itself points to the flaw in the COVID-19 response as a country. I think every state probably has done something that they think works for them. Seems like West Virginia's mastered vaccine. Seems like West Virginia's mastered vaccines. New York mastered the initial sort of surge of patients. And California, in the first couple of months, I think lowered the rate faster than any other state. No one has been able to sustain effective control of COVID-19. So I'm not sure there's a state that I think has done a particularly good job and hence the circumstance we find ourselves in is what we all are trying to deal with today.
Thank you. Herman?
I would go with more of a text and approach. It also depends on what time period of the coronavirus we are trying to see. However, I am for a full functioning, open economy with safety measures in place such as social distancing and wearing of masks. Lockdowns don't work. If lockdowns worked, we wouldn't have the highest homeless rate rate in Fresno County because everybody would be inside. Instead, people are not indoors. Our restaurants that have outdoor seating, that was stopped. But then a U C S F, Dr. Gandhi, had said that by stopping outdoor dining, we had an increase in COVID cases because people are gathering indoors in small proximity. So lockdowns don't work. I am for a full, open economy and more of a text and approach.
Thank you. Noah?
So I, I would actually agree with Lynn's point that the, the biggest issue that we've had is a, is a lack of a federal response to this pandemic. Our states are not separate islands, we're not separated by walls, and we have seen that this pandemic travels. What I am in favor of is responsibility from the top down, responsibility demonstrated by our leaders to demonstrate to our businesses, to demonstrate to our community that this pandemic is real, that people are dying of this pandemic across age levels and across the spectrum. So it's incredibly important that we're setting a good example. Everyone here on this stage has talked a tremendous amount about public safety. When we're talking about a pandemic that is taking lives, we're talking about a public safety issue. And we're talking about the need to protect our citizens. And that means doing things in a responsible manner and showing that we can do that by leading with good example.
Thank you. Diane?
I would definitely have to go with Florida, but I'm also partial to South Dakota. But obviously, I think the reason why it was good for these states to be able to have flexibility in their own responses is because they all do have different dynamics and different considerations to take into account. But the key to me is really focusing on that education. And again, the biggest problem we've seen in California is the absolute disaster of the mixed messaging and changing from being for something before you were against it or against it before you were for it. And it leaves people extremely frustrated and confused. And so even aside from picking a state that I think has done it well, exploring the fact of how poorly California has done it might be most important to us here in Clovis and juxtaposing that with the freedom that the people in Clovis have had with being able to take the education of, this is my situation, this is what I can do to make myself safe, and this is how I can contribute into an open economy, I think is very important.
Thank you.
All right, candidates, we're covering a lot of ground through the first five questions. Let's go to number six. There's been a continuing rise in homelessness in around, in and around Clovis. What policy would you propose to address this issue? Lynn?
Homelessness is another one of those issues that doesn't know city boundaries particularly. So I think it's a, it's a couple of solutions. One is we need to work as a county. We cannot solve an issue like homelessness one city at a time. The mayor of Fresno is doing a really good job in his cleanup, but he would be the first to tell you that if those folks moved from Fresno to Clovis, he's not really helping the homeless. So I think we need to work together as a county and there are a lot of efforts that have gone underway along that, along that line. I think from a Clovis response, our police department has done an exceptional job of trying to interact with these folks, getting them help, getting them care, getting them services, getting them shelter. It's not illegal to be homeless, but staying on it and talking with folks I think is part of it. I also think we need to invest in probably a homeless response team at some point in our police department so we can have more attention to that, to that problem that's out there and try and get, get help to those folks where they need it.
Herman?
I deal with homeless issue every single day. As a business owner, on my lot, different homeless people sleep there and loiter there. And the police's response, they take them downtown and they're back the next day. They use drugs on my lot as well. It's a major issue. Right now with Clovis, it's more of, they just push it out the problem of Fresno. That, that's what's happened in Clovis. And I think the larger issue is with the state, with our governor. I had already said that if Gavin Newsom becomes our governor, whatever it is, the issue in San Francisco will be statewide. And I'm an independent, so with no party, but if Gavin Newsom is elected, we will have this issue statewide. And that's what's happening now. Homelessness is an issue statewide in Fresno and now in Clovis as well.
Noah?
We do need a whole-scale approach in dealing with homelessness. There are many things that are contributing to homelessness and, and of course with the pandemic and increases in job losses, we're seeing an increase in homelessness as well. So we need to be able to make sure that we have an appropriate way of reaching out to the homeless within our community, whether it's to provide shelter, whether it's to provide needed resources for mental health. Oftentimes when people are homeless, they don't have access to these things. So we really have to look as a community, what we can do to help. We cannot just push the problem from city to city. A Fresno problem will quickly become a Clovis problem and vice versa. But there are a lot of factors that contribute to homelessness, people becoming unhoused. So we have to be able to look at the root of these issues and work to fix them so that we can solve the problem without just trying to push it to someone else's neighborhood. That's not going to solve our problem.
Diane?
I think this is a really important issue and there's a couple of components of it that are important to me. One is that we have to be respectful of the quality of life, concerns of our community and our neighborhoods. It is a public safety aspect too, when you're talking about our kids, our schools, our parks. But it's also really important to me to be able to set aside and kind of separate this idea that somehow leaving people on the streets is an okay response. That's not okay. If we want to treat these people with true compassion, we are going to identify what their problem is, why it is they're in that position, and we're going to get them either the mental health deals that they need, we're going to get them into substance abuse treatment or whatever the situation may be. There are resources out there for them and we need to move them to those resources, not just leave them in the street. If it was my family member, my friend there, I wouldn't step over them and think that that was compassionate.
Thank you. Vong?
Homelessness is an issue in which people sort of follow the money. And Clovis has always been left out. So when there were $13 million came, it went to Fresno. So Clovis, you got to deal with it with what you got. And so it's so difficult for us to be involved. So there's, moving forward, we need to be more involved or be at the table and see how we can have, you know, allocation to some of these funds. Whenever there's monies for all these social issues, they would never give it to us. And so we're left scrambling to go, where do we find the resources to help? We can't. And so that's why it's difficult in Clovis. And so if we can take care of this as a true state, as a whole region, when the monies come, Jerry's going to spend over $100 million, none of that ever spills over to how we can be a part of it and be a part of the solution together. And so we need to start to work together and not just follow where the money goes.
Thank you. Next question. Following the pandemic, please identify three things the city can do to help businesses recover faster. Herman, we'll start with you.
Yes. I will start with having incentives to bring businesses to Clovis. For example, our state may hinder our business community, but Clovis will not if I am elected. I will attract companies like Tesla who leave to Texas, but they will know that they have a place in Clovis, where the city will not deter their investment, but encourage it. They will also receive incentives with tax because they'll be bringing in jobs, they'll be increasing our social capital. Our children will go to school with people who are major engineers and developers at a company like Tesla. I will also be bringing back the DARE program. The DARE program was axed in 2008 during a budget cut due to the recession. We had the best economy before coronavirus and we need to bring that program back because it takes a big toll on family, drug abuse does.
Thank you. Noah?
Yeah, I think moving beyond the pandemic, I think it's going to be really important that we get all of the consumers back on board in terms of the safety and the protocols that are going to be happening within our businesses. I think right now there has been a lot of confusion regarding what businesses are following health protocols, what businesses are following the rules, what businesses are not. So I think it's going to be really important from a PR perspective that we really bring back very positive attention towards our city, focusing in on the various communities, focusing back in on the vibrancy of our downtown, old town Clovis community to attract business back there, hosting various events across the community to encourage business to return, also identifying some potential grant opportunities for businesses to help them recoup some of these lost funds, but really a whole-scale PR campaign to really bring focus that we are back, we are, we are working together and we're all here helping each other get through.
Thank you. Diane?
As a business owner, I think the best thing I would ask my city to do for me is to get out of the way. We have incredible entrepreneurial spirit in our business owners in Clovis and that's really what we want. That's what we've wanted basically this entire time is just to be allowed to run our businesses, to take care of our families, to take care of our employees, and to service our customers. And if that is allowed, and as soon as that is allowed full throttle, we're going to be okay because that's what we do. But second to that, I think is the idea that we had to deal with the yo-yo of changing metrics and moving goalposts, and that doesn't work for business. And so we need a city leadership that it's great when they're behind us, it's great when they're shoulder to shoulder with us, but what we really need is them out leading the way for us in what our abilities are in doing these things and making sure, again, that that yo-yo stops and once we're open, we stay open.
Thank you. Vong?
We have to look at what we can control. So the first thing we can control is fees, right? Shutting off water, making sure sewers picked up. We have to continue to do that whether they pay or not. And so that's something we can control. So waiving entertainment licenses. So we need to be able to do that and educating our businesses to what we interpret that regulation to be. The second is to help those who are displaced, those who are, are, you know, having issues with, with food or paying rent. And we're going to continue to do that. We have the CDBG funds and we're going to continue to do that. Lastly, don't look to us. We aren't that smart. Don't believe the leaders too much, okay? You know what to do, Clovis residents. You're much smarter. You've survived more than this. So if we would just get out of the way, stop creating all these rules, I truly believe Clovis will be able to stand again and even stronger, just if we would just get out of the way and be quiet. Thanks.
Thank you. Lynn?
Thanks for the question. The three things that come to mind, one is we have done a really good job during the pandemic to support local businesses, restaurants in particular. And over the course of the pandemic, using some of the, the funding, we were able to provide, I, I don't know the exact number, but thousands of meals to seniors using local restaurants. So we fed our seniors that were displaced from the senior center, we had volunteers delivering food, and we provided business to our restaurants. So I think trying to find those innovative ways to link business with community need. The second thing is we can provide an ordinance environment that makes it easier for new businesses to emerge or businesses to adapt. And the example that comes to mind is the work on this idea of ghost kitchens. So restaurants that are going to shift from in, in-person dining to just having kitchens and takeout are, our ordinance is prepared for that kind of work. So we can control the ordinance environment and to Vong's point, the fee environment. And finally, I think we need to be clear in our message that it's safe to shop in Clovis. It wasn't clear whether it was safe to shop here, we can communicate that.
All right, thank you. Candidates, we have one final question for you tonight. During this COVID-19 pandemic, we consistently hear politicians say they will follow the science, yet the so-called experts do not agree on major issues. What is your position on, one, opening schools, two, opening restaurants, businesses, and three, shelter-in-place restrictions? Noah, you get the first crack at this last question.
Okay, I'm just making sure I have all three parts. In terms of my, my stance on schools, I do believe we need to have our schools open and we have to do it in a safe manner. We have to ensure that we are social distancing, we have to ensure that our children are wearing masks and so are our educators. Children are incredibly resilient. If my seven-year-old and 11-year-old can wear a mask, so can you. I think the struggle we're seeing within our schools right now is because our schools are so overcrowded, it's making opening and allowing students to be at schools for a, a good amount of time, right, is very difficult because we have too many kids in the classroom. So that's an issue we need to address in and of itself. In terms of our restaurants' abilities to open, I think when, I think being open outside and being open inside with plenty of social distancing, not crowding people into spaces, I think that that's important and I think that we can do that. In terms of businesses, we have to ensure, again, if we are following the safety protocols and we allow ourselves to be open. I think we are too far beyond shelter-in-place.
All right, we move to Diane.
As far as schools are concerned, they need to be open and we need to let them play. I do think that we need to support the Clovis Unified School District and the Board of Trustees and the options that they were trying to provide our families, because I think the key component, whether it's schools, businesses, or anything else, is the individuals have the ability to assess their risk level. I know whether I care for my elderly parents, they're not elderly though. I also know whether I have any children with immunodeficiency order, disorders, or if I have any underlying conditions. And I also have the ability to assess my own risk tolerance. I can look at a school setting or I can look at a business and decide whether or not I think they have the protocols in place for me to be there safely. And that's the approach we need to take with all of these things. We're beyond shelter-in-place, our businesses need to be allowed to open, they will do it responsibly, it's their livelihoods. And our schools absolutely need to be open because the repercussions and the damage we've done to our kids is going to be catastrophic and we have to get them back in those classrooms immediately.
Thank you. Thank you. Vong?
Can you repeat the three again?
Sure. What is your position on opening schools, opening restaurants, businesses, and shelter-in-place restrictions?
Well, first of all, with regards to the schools, I'm endorsed by the Board of the Clovis Unified School District. And so I support their decision. We have always worked together and we will continue to work together to get our kids back in school and I'm all for that. With regards to businesses, Julie Glenn, Manny Peralos, Louis Everk, the Open Central California, which stood for businesses from the onset, I've been at every one of those rallies, supporting those, supporting the Southeast Asian nail and hair salons where no, everyone forgot, let them open up and, you know, earn a living. Lastly, was, where's the science on all the detriment that has happened because we stayed at home? Show me that science and that I'm willing to talk to you about any other science. So let's just be fair when we talk about science.
Thank you. Lynn?
In terms of opening schools, of course, kids are better off in school, that's where they belong. And I, I want to commend Clovis Unified, they've done a tremendous amount of work to ensure kids' safety. So yes, kids need to be in school if we can ensure their safety. And I feel really confident in Clovis Unified that they have been able to do that. In terms of the businesses opening, I think what has been so confusing is today you're open, tomorrow you're not, Thursday you might be. I would support and support today a consistent set of rules and I want to let the market do the rest. If I, as a consumer, am not comfortable going to a restaurant, I don't have to go. But if I'm comfortable, go. So I think if they, if we impose consistent, six feet apart, masking, whatever the basics are, and then let the customer decide, I think that makes the most sense at this point. And the shelter-in-place ship has sailed a long time ago, so there's no point in that any longer.
Herman?
Schools should be open. After healthcare workers and the elderly, teachers should be next in line to receive the vaccine. Parents are having to become teachers and this is taking a great toll on families. Parents are unable to work the amount of hours they used to be able to work before because they're restricted to be home now. For our businesses, our businesses should never have been shut down. The three things I would do for our businesses as a council member are give grants, lower taxes for businesses, and also forgive late fees on their utility bills that occurred during the pandemic and proximity after, hopefully and soon. For shelter-in-place, I do not think government should restrict the movement of people. So I am completely against shelter-in-place. Our police departments in both Clovis and Fresno did not have that rule in place. They did not stop anybody for that, so I agree with that stance.
Thank you. Herman? Okay, thank you, candidates, for all those, all your answers to those questions. We're going to have some time for a last...
We're going to have some time for a last closing statement from each of you. You'll have one minute. Vaughn, we will start with you.
Clovis residents, I trust your decision. I trust your ability to select the leaders that will lead you, and I, and I asked for your vote this evening. And I came from afar. I came from a communist country. And I came to America and I fell in love with this country, and I fell in love with Clovis. And because of that, America's the only place in which my story now is interwoven into the fabric of what America is. Isn't that just beautiful? And when I drive on Herndon on the 168 and I look at Clovis, it's so humbling. So humbling that that city is a city that I love, that my children grow up in, and a city that will thrive and will survive these next four years as well. Thank you for the honor of serving you these last four years, if I don't get a chance to thank you. God bless you. God bless Clovis, and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you. Diane?
I am grateful for the opportunity to have shared my thoughts on important issues and my vision for Clovis with all of you tonight. I have also truly enjoyed the many months I have spent out in our neighborhoods, knocking on doors, and talking with so many of you. I've been humbled by your support for a first-time candidate and the appreciation you have expressed for my taking the time to come to you in person to campaign for a seat on our council. If you want to know how hard someone will work for you in office, look at how hard they're willing to work to earn your vote. If you want to know if someone is really wanting to represent you in office, look at where they focused their campaign, collecting thousands from special interests or coming personally, yet socially distanced, to your front door. I'm here tonight to offer leadership that will defend our Clovis way of life and the local control upon which it was built, and I hope to earn your vote. Feel free to reach out to me at dianthenumber4clovis.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah?
First, I'd just like to say thank you all so much for having us here tonight and leading a wonderful discussion so we could all share how we feel about Clovis and how we will work to improve it. As I said before, I've been in Clovis since 2013. I came here to lead as a campus as its campus president, but I chose to stay here because I fell in love with the city. I fell in love with the community, the small-town charm, and the wonderful schools for my young boys. But I'm running for city council because I believe that we can make Clovis even stronger with a fresh perspective, where we can focus on responsible leadership, responsible growth, and responsible support for our local businesses and our residents. I believe that it is a team effort. I have been blown away by the amount of support that I have received across the community, and I look to earn your vote on March the 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Herman?
I am happy that today we had a transparent narrative given to you today, not a narrative that had any media bias or any of a media-motivated narrative for you. I have been a resident of Clovis since I was nine years old. For over 22 years, I truly want the best for our city. I will not be buying our city. No developer, no big business has given me a donation. I have limited my donations to $2,000, not $130,000 or $80,000 like some. I will also be donating one year of my salary as city council member to local charities and veterans organizations. I ask everyone running in this race to do the same, because we could have an avalanche effect by starting a snowball. Others in our city will also take notice and join in. Please vote for me.
Thank you. Lynn?
Thanks. Thanks to my colleagues up here tonight. It was fun to see you all in person. The conversation was important for voters to hear, and I think the choices we have in leadership are clearer than ever. And I'm going to leave you with this. Local government is not partisan politics. Local government is service. Those who approach it as politics will change the nature of our community in significant and negative ways. I am the best candidate to continue to serve on the Clovis City Council, the most experienced, the most trusted, skilled, with a proven track record of community service and results. If it is important to you to keep Clovis the safest place to live with the strong economy, our businesses open, our kids back in school, our neighborhoods safe, I am the leader to ensure that our progress continues. I'm the only candidate to have the support of the Clovis Police and Fire Department, Sheriff Mims, Lisa Smith Camp District Attorney, and a long list of business owners, educators, healthcare leaders, and your neighbors that you know and trust. Your ballots are in your mailbox, maybe on your kitchen counter. Would appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Lynn. And I'd like to thank all of our candidates for their time this evening. We appreciate your passion for our community and your willingness to serve. I'd also like to thank our moderator, Rich Rodriguez, on loan from KMPH Fox 26. This program would not be possible without the spirit of cooperation within our great Clovis community and the generous contributions from tonight's sponsors. I'd like to thank our host, Lorenzo Rios, CEO of the Clovis Veterans Memorial District, the Clovis Roundup Community Newspaper, and Talk Radio 1550 KXEX. Also, thank you for tuning in to this very informative forum and your opportunity to meet our Clovis City Council candidates. Remember, Election Day is on Tuesday, March 2nd. Please vote and make a difference in your community.